We will come to order. If you would please rise and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Our Pledge of Allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic where we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Councilmember Erby.
Here.
Councilmember Page. Councilmember Wassinger.
Here.
Councilmember O'Meara.
Here.
Councilmember Dolan.
Here.
Councilmember O'Leary. Councilmember Harder.
Here.
Mr. Chair, we have a call.
Thank you.
Move for approval to Journal, a meeting of July 21, 2015.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. The Journal is approved. We have no bid openings this evening, so we will move to communications.
Mr. Chair, there are no tax compromises this evening, so we'll move to zoning matters. Under zoning matters, item number one, 4th District.
See file in County Council be directed to prepare their appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number two, 3rd District. Hold on the order of business, please.
So ordered.
Item number three, 6th District.
See file in County Council be directed to prepare their appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, 3rd District. Receive and file.
So ordered.
Item number five, 6th District.
Hold on the order of business.
So ordered.
We go into Road and Bridge Magister, Chair. Item number one, 6th District.
See file plan specifications and detailed estimate of cost be approved and directed procurement be authorized to advertise for bids as requested pending federal highway administration authorization and a copy of this report be sent to interested parties.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
We go into other communications, Mr. Chair. Item number one.
Receive file in County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation, and that will be the order.
Item number two, 4th District.
Same motion.
So ordered.
Item number three, 7th District.
File and the County Councilor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation.
So ordered.
Item number four, 1st District.
Receive file in the County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion for item number five.
So ordered.
Item number six.
Receive file, and that will be the order.
Item number seven.
File in County Council be directed to prepare the appropriate legislation. Same motion through item number nine, and that will be the order.
Item number 10, 6th District.
Same motion through item number 12. Through item number 11.
So ordered.
Item number 12, 4th District.
Receive file and refer to Department of Transportation for review and recommendation.
So ordered. Are there any add-ons this evening?
Yes, sir. Under add-ons, item number one, 7th District.
Receive file and have the Councilor be directed to prepare appropriate legislation. Is that it? Or is it double?
No, that's it.
That's an add-on?
Yeah. I think it's duplicated.
Okay. So ordered. Actually, I'm gonna call for a committee of the whole on that. Okay. So we'll set a date on that. I don't have that date yet, but...
Does the order, Mr. Chair, is refer to the Council's Committee of the Whole?
Yes. On what topic?
On the Veterans Court. Is that what this was, right?
Yep.
But we already approved it in communication earlier on.
I'm calling for a committee meeting to explain why we're spending $60,000.
Okay.
That's the reason, if anybody needs to know that. I'm sure, I'm not saying there's not a good reason, I just think it's transparent. We're gonna spend $60,000, and that's why I'm calling.
That's fine.
Okay. Report to the County Executive.
Nothing further, Chairman.
Okay. No reports to special committee this evening. We will move to the public forum.
The first speaker this evening, Mr. Chair.
All right. When your name is called, if you please come up and state your name, please, and please keep your comments to three minutes.
First speaker this evening is Jeff Barnett.
My name is Jeff Barnett. I'm with Crown Castle.
Thank you.
And I'm actually here to address any information that would be requested for item number two on the agenda. For the relocation of the tower.
I didn't hear. I'm sorry.
For the relocation of the communications tower.
Oh.
Maybe we can chat after the meeting.
Sure.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions for?
Okay. Thank you.
Next speaker is Tom Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, it was interesting to see County Executive Stinger's remarks about possible MetroLink expansion. Mr. Stinger said that in 2010, St. Louis County voters voted to expand MetroLink. He also said he favored the expansions to keep young people here. If you recall, in 2010, Metro brought all these people in wheelchairs to council meetings to urge the tax hike be put on the ballot. Unless the tax hike is approved, they said, disabled people won't be able to get around. The then-Metro CEO, Bob Eris, said the tax hike was needed to restore transit service. The head of the deceptive campaign, John Nations, says the tax hike was indispensable to our economic well-being. He repeatedly said the tax hike was needed to get people to their jobs. Nothing really said about MetroLink expansion. In 2008, a tax increase was on the ballot for Metro. All the usual deceptions were told and a few new ones added, but it still failed. This was the second Metro tax hike in a row to be defeated. What was Metro to do now? The answer: contrive service cuts to gain sympathy for a tax hike in 2010, then tell voters the tax was needed to bring back the service. The whole thing was a sham, but it worked. The media bought into it entirely. But Metro is still not providing services for those in need. The reality is that MetroLink has been a huge waste of money and has hurt riders that depend on public transit. After more than 20 years of MetroLink, less than 2% of county commuters use public transit. Yet great success is always claimed using inflated and deceptive ridership numbers. As Ben said, that to have a chance of putting a light rail system in operation, you have to never stop lying. And that has been the case in St. Louis. When MetroLink was being planned, it was said no tax increase was needed. Yet in 1994, a year after it began operating, a tax hike from MetroLink was put on the ballot. Campaign had maps with MetroLink extensions going in all directions. They would be built if only the tax was approved by voters. I brought along a brochure for 1994 with a map with eight extensions, and it says, "Proposition M makes it possible to build future MetroLink lines extending west, south, and north." Voters approved the tax. Three years later, without laying a foot of track, Metro was back on the ballot asking for another tax hike. It was defeated. To understand why MetroLink is such a huge waste of money and why it will never be a meaningful provider of transit for this area, you need only consider this 1984 off-the-cuff quote from MetroLink supporter, Les Sterman. MetroLink supporters will not dare say this truth today. This is what he said about the light rail system for St. Louis. It's a false notion that we will be attracting zillions of people out of their cars. Right now, 3% of the people use public transit. If we increase that to 4%, it, meaning MetroLink, will be both an improvement and success. Imagine if voters were asked to spend hundreds of millions of dollars, billions of dollars, and eventually tens of billions of dollars to maybe get 1% of the cars off the road. It makes no sense. And certainly, it's a bad deal for taxpayers who have been stuck with the bill. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Abir Moten.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. My name is Abir Moten, and I'm homeless. And I'm here advocating for all the homeless. I have a special request I had from people coming up to me saying something about the county council, and I just wanted to make something clear because I promised to do this for them. They said that there are a lot of homeless who are ending up in jail due to heat waves and cold weather and other things by targeting from police. People have been requesting that you keep the current staff that you have and do not change to Horizon because they're saying Horizon is not good. They don't treat people good. They do not heal people good, and they are lazy and no good. And they're asking me to ask Steve Stinger to please, you know, consider the homeless as being people, not subjects or guinea pigs for doctors to learn on. And they're saying that Horizon neglects a lot of people, so I told these people that I promise to tell you all about this. Also, I want to mention, yesterday I had a hearing set for my unemployment. I went to the Florissant Career Center. I had worked on the computer. They intercepted me. They froze the computer and they stopped it. I went to make the phone call for the hearing from their phones. They intercepted me, and they stopped it. My friend John wanted to use the phones. They intercepted him, and they stopped it. We got nothing done, and I'm back, I'm poor again. I got nothing. I didn't even get the hearing. So I just want to let you know that Florissant Career Center, named America's Job Center, there's a lot of corruption in that building. I would've gotten some money to get out of this heat. We're stuck in the car, and I have a battery-operated fan. The police intercepted that, which is not working because they're keeping it low and not working. The other day, the police targeted me, and they put some kind of beam on me to try to fake, make me look like I'm gonna have a heart attack so that they can lure me to go to a hospital. They have used bikers and trucks, and they're still idling us on the highway and around us when we're sleeping. I have people telling me when I'm doing petitions, one guy stopped by me, and I have a witness. And he's saying that the homeless don't deserve a shelter. They deserve a gas chamber. Now, homeless are people. They're survivors. In every holy book, it says charity is for the poor, to treat the poor, the ill, the disabled equally. So it doesn't matter about who's rich or poor. We have to do what God put us here for, and we have to be humanitarian about this. You know, I know it's good to have money, but which is better, human life or money? It's human life. We take the good deeds with us. We don't take the bad deeds with us. So I see this here on page 11 about the county council order of business. I'm sorry, $1,958. Please reconsider about that and save that money for the homeless shelter. Thank you very much. Have a wonderful evening.
You too. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike LeBlanc.
Good evening, councilmembers. I am here to ask for your support in the expansion of the Jefferson Barracks National Cemetery into Sylvan Springs Park. The forums that were held last week were pretty much evenly split amongst veterans that didn't live in the area but are very supportive, and people that live right next to the park. The statements that came out, in my opinion, were, "I like veterans, but not in my backyard." So the thing is, what we are here to beseech you is to actually look beyond the backyard and look at what's good for the area. This cemetery services seven states. It services over 350,000 veterans in our area. Now, 2005 BRAC, the Base Reduction and Closure Act, gave 269,000 to the economic development of St. Louis County back in 2009. 2010, a blue-ribbon study was released, a phenomenal study about how to expand and save one of our most cherished treasures, Jefferson Barracks. If we go back, there's not much in St. Louis County that's gonna be 200 years old here soon. In 2016, Jefferson Barracks will be. The Long Range Master Plan talked about the leadership in the area, and I look at a few members of the council that were on there at the time. It looked at jobs. It looked at economic development. It looked at gains in long-term jobs. It looked at property values rising. It looked at just that whole area rising up. Now, what I find is, St. Louis Partnership has taken over the economic development for the council partnership. But when I go there, I see that most of the action right now is in the city. So I ask you, what's in it for the county? Of the 18 members that were on the steering committee for the master plan, six of them still exist in a capacity to help. Five of them are veterans. Five of the veterans are getting their jobs done. They're doing what they should do. The one that's still in the St. Louis County government, or I'm sorry, St. Louis Partnership, doesn't return phone calls. Nobody knows what happened with the steering committee for Jefferson Barracks. It's very embarrassing that, you know, we said... I can look at a few of you that got up here with grandiose speeches and said what a phenomenal thing to do, and now here, five years later, we are stuck in the mud. Now, at the forum, everybody that was against it said, "Well, put it over here, put it over there, put it over places." You can't. Sinkhole and MODOT. Walmart is private property. The only place we can expand is into Sylvan Springs Park. When I got out of the military, the one thing that I thought the government would guarantee me is my spot. My spot next to my grandfather, my spot next to my father, my spot next to my brothers. And please, let's not have a vote that takes that spot away from me and the other gentleman here and ladies. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Final speaker this evening is Harrison Axe.
I've been a resident of St. Louis County. I was born in University City, and I am 93 years old. I'm part of the greatest generation. During the war, we didn't worry about which guy was Republican, which was Democrat. And when it comes to decision on this, I don't want to have party lines anything to do with. This is veterans, but for your freedom, but for my freedom. I know what it's like. I am a combat veteran. I went in service. Third day I was in service after Pearl Harbor, I found myself on a ship. No boot camp. I grew up in a hell of a hurry when the U-boats came. All I'm doing is pleading for youth people to make an honest decision on the park. That's a burial ground. It's not a walking place for dogs. It walked dogs in their own yard and up and down the street. I lived near the college there in Kirkwood, the junior college. People walk dogs up and down the street there. There's no reason why they can't do the same there. That place is hallowed ground for all of us veterans. In the beginning, it was part of the BA ground anyhow. They feared it was surplus. We've been questioned why they only taken what we are and what's gonna happen after. We don't know. The BA only allows them expand so much at a time. They have other cemeteries that are expanding. This is why they're holding it what they are now. I know some people there are upset about it, but we need a place to bury our veterans. There are fellows coming back from modern countries. What are you gonna tell their wives, their families? You haven't got a place to bury them? That's an outright sin. So I'm pleading with you to go along with us and let us have that Sylvan Springs back. And do not play any party lines. This is not a party thing. Each and every one of you is supposed to take the work for our veterans. There are between 80 and 100,000 veterans in St. Louis County. I've done the research on it. Them veterans vote, their wives vote, and their families vote. Remember that.
Thank you, sir. Thank all you veterans for your service.
No more speakers, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That will conclude the public forum. Introduction of bills.
Bill number 178, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $50,984.39 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the Juvenile Accountability Program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 179, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a maternal and child health services block grant and subsequent renewal grants from the Missouri Department of Health and Senior Services, DHSS, appropriating up to $1 million received from DHSS, and authorizing the county executive to execute a contract with DHSS related to the grant and other necessary documents. Bill number 180, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance accepting a grant of up to $1,958,422 from the State of Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, for the North St. Louis Career Pathway Bridge Demonstration Project. Depositing and appropriating said monies as set forth herein, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 181, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to accept a grant of up to $137,307.92 from the Missouri Department of Public Safety, appropriating the same for support of the Choices Drug and Alcohol Treatment Program, and authorizing the county executive to execute necessary documents. Bill number 182, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance approving acceptance of donation of $5,000 from youth in need, and appropriating same for support of acquisition of student bus passes for youth in alternative school programs. Bill number 183, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, for Councilmember Page, and ordinance declaring the public necessity of and providing for the opening, widening, and establishing of a section of public road designated as Banshee Road, lying within unincorporated St. Louis County, Missouri, directing the acquisition of real property there for, and authorizing the county executive to execute contracts, agreements, and related documents, Bill number 184, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance authorizing the county executive to execute a contract and up to three subsequent extensions with the Missouri Department of Social Services, State Tech and Science Team, for the provision of child autopsies and related services by the St. Louis County Medical Examiner. Bill number 185, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance amending ordinance number 25,885 as amended by repealing and reenacting Section 1 pertaining to grants from the Missouri Department of Economic Development, Division of Workforce Development, for support of programs and services related to workforce development. Bill number 186, introduced by Councilmember Dolan, and ordinance amending Title 5, Chapter 502 St. Louis County Divisal Order since 1974 as amended, levy and collection of taxes by repealing and reenacting Section 502.410, continuing an emergency telephone tax. Mr. Chair, that is all the bills.
Thank you.
Bill number 8, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Hold, please. So ordered.
Bill number 134, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Hold, please. So ordered.
Bill number 159, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
Hold, please. Bill number 159 is held.
Bill number 162, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number 162.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 162 is perfected.
Bill number 163, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number 163.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 163 is perfected.
Bill number 164, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number 164.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 164 is perfected.
Bill number 165, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number 165.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 165 is perfected.
Bill number 166, introduced by Councilmembers Wassinger and Harder.
I move to perfect Bill number 166.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 166 is perfected.
Bill number 167, introduced by Councilmembers O'Meara and O'Leary.
Take it up. Move for perfection of Bill number 167.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 167 is perfected.
Bill number 168, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I can take it up. Move for perfection of Bill number 168.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 168 is perfected.
Bill number 169, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move to perfect Bill number 169.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 169 is perfected.
Bill number 170, introduced by Councilmembers Page and O'Leary.
I can take it up. Move for perfection of Bill number 170.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 170 is perfected.
Bill number 171, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I take it up for perfection. Perfect Bill number 171.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 171 is perfected.
Bill number 172, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill number 172.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number 172 is perfected.
Bill number 173, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for perfection of Bill number 173.
Any second? No second. Motion fails.
Bill number 1...
Can I make a statement, please?
Sure.
Well, I was gonna make a statement, but really, I'm at a loss for words to think that this council is not in support of a minimum wage increase. I had a person who was supportive of this call me today, and I was quite honest with them that I might not be able to get this through. And they couldn't believe that we have a couple of union members who work under a prevailing wage and don't work without a contract, who would not support the minimum wage. And I thought that was very interesting. So, you know, I heard former President Clinton say today that one of the greatest traits of America is that we've never had much resentment of other people's success. We just want a fair deal. And I think that's what the people who are working for less than what they should be making to provide for their families feel, is that they just want a fair deal. So with that, I acquiesce, I guess.
I have a brief statement for the record. Personally, I support an increase in the minimum wage. I didn't support this particular bill. I, you know, there's a lot of reasons for that. I think people need to make more money. They'd spend the money. I understand how the increase in minimum wage would help people. I'm not opposed to that. I would love to see a statewide minimum wage increase, so it'd be equitable for the entire area, but this particular bill is, without going into detail, not the bill that I can support for a minimum wage, and it's just the bill itself. It's not the principle.
Myself, as a union member, as you referred to, I am supportive of a minimum wage. Hazel, you introduce a bill with no impact study here. We've got city of St. Louis, who is under a minimum wage compromise of $11 an hour. We go over to Kansas City. They just recently, last week, passed a minimum wage of $13 an hour, and we're all, once again, we're all across the board on these wages. I fully support the increase of minimum wage.
There have been studies done regarding this, the minimum wage.
An impact study on St. Louis County?
Well, not St. Louis County. I mean, we can request that. We can request that.
We haven't, or I haven't seen any impact studies of any kind, and I've talked to other people about this, city, statewide, what have you. Again, I support the concept, but for one thing, to have an obligation to the entire county, it's my understanding we can't legally pass something and have the municipalities join in that, so it would ultimately be just for unincorporated area, and that's, I don't think that's right. If there was a way we could do that, I don't... The legal interpretation I received is we can't do that, which sets us up for possible litigation, which I don't think is responsible to the county residents, knowing there could be litigation. I'm not saying I would definitely support a statewide, which I'm sure anybody, well, I'll just speak for myself. I would support a statewide minimum wage. I agree with the philosophy, but as it stands right now, we don't have a bill in place that we could, that I think would get us the increase.
When we talk about doing it just for unincorporated St. Louis County, I read something recently... I read something recently where combining the municipalities could be a health issue. And certainly, the minimum wage, the low, the low minimum wage is a health issue. And we have facts that go along with that.
Well, I, you know, and like I told you last week-
And I can present them.
Well, I haven't seen those, and I don't know anybody that has, but, you know. There again, it's, I'm just going by the, our county councils, or maybe you could speak to what, is, can we legally do this? Is there?
As it stands, this bill would not immediately apply to the entirety of the, of the county as written. And an attempt to enforce it upon businesses outside the unincorporated areas of St. Louis County would invite litigation.
I have spoken with municipalities who are willing to do the same thing.
Well, and that's great. And maybe if the municipalities step up and start doing it, then that, you know, that's, like, we, that's my point. We, I don't believe that this council or, that's not our position to tell these municipalities what to do. I'd love to see it.
We'd not tell them what to do. They would have to do it on their own.
Listen, there's some exclusions from municipalities in here also, though? Not every municipality was included in your bill.
Right. If you may, it's less than one point five billion.
So it didn't cover the whole county?
I'm sorry?
The bill didn't cover the whole county.
Unincorporated, but the other, but the other municipalities have the option of signing on.
But some of them were exempt.
Right.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Sure. Thank you.
Bill number one seventy-four, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
Hold, please.
So ordered.
Bill number one seventy-five, introduced by Councilmember Page.
Take it up. Move for perfection of Bill number one seventy-five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one seventy-five is perfected.
Bill number one seventy-six, introduced by Councilmember O'Meara.
Take it up. Move for perfection of Bill number one seventy-six.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one seventy-six is perfected.
Bill number one seventy-seven, introduced by Councilmember Page.
I'd take it up. Move for perfection of Bill number one seventy-seven.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Bill number one seventy-seven is perfected. Final passage.
Bill number fifty-two, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
Bill number one sixteen, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
Bill number one fifty-five, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Please hold.
Bill number one fifty-six, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
Which one was that?
A grant.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I'm going back. I apologize. Can I revert back to Bill number one fifty-five, please?
Bill number one fifty-five, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I apologize. I move for final passage of Bill number one fifty-five.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one fifty-five, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number one fifty-five is finally passed.
Bill number one fifty-six, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill number one fifty-six.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one fifty-six, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number one fifty-six is finally passed.
Bill number one fifty-seven, introduced by Councilmember O'Leary.
I'd take it up. Move for final passage of Bill number one fifty-seven.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one fifty-seven, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number one fifty-seven is finally passed.
Bill number one fifty-eight, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill number one fifty-eight.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one fifty-eight, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number one fifty-eight is finally passed.
Bill number one sixty, introduced by Councilmember Dolan.
I move for final passage of Bill one sixty.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one sixty, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number one sixty is finally passed.
Bill number one sixty-one, introduced by Councilmember Harder.
I move that we make final passage of this bill, number one sixty-one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on Bill number one sixty-one, there are five ayes and two absent.
Bill number one sixty-one is finally passed.
Moving on to resolutions, Mr. Chair. We have three this evening. Resolution number one, introduced by Councilmember Wassinger.
Please read the resolution.
Resolution, whereas the people of St. Louis County and the thousands of persons from all over the United States who visit St. Louis County are fortunate to have an outstanding county park system with a great variety of recreational opportunities available to them, and whereas the county council is cognizant that the normal revenue stream falls short of the needed funding to maintain the many county parks and their facilities and programs, and is particularly appreciative of all those whose inventiveness and generosity have enabled the new St. Louis County Parks Foundation to assist the Department of Parks and Recreation in carrying out its essential mission. Now therefore be it resolved by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council encourages all St. Louis Countyans to support the mission of the St. Louis County Parks Foundation, which will enable the county park system to remain strong and available to all.
I move to adopt resolution number one.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Before I vote yes, I just want to comment that I had the opportunity, excuse me, to attend with County Executive Stanger and Councilman Dolan, the, I guess, kind of crowning event of the newly formed Parks Foundation at Tillis Park by the new president, Mr. Olendorf, made a significant contribution and allowed, through the Park Foundation, to have installed a beautiful water fountain. I think that's a classic example of good things that can come from this newly formed foundation, and I, I'm happy to be a part of it. I vote aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye, and I do also want to thank you for the comment. Appreciate the foundation, and this will be for all the county parks. So wherever needs be throughout the entire system, Mr. Olendorf, we appreciate your being here and your support and putting this together, and hopefully it'll be good for, for many years to come. Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number one, there are five ayes and two absent.
Resolution number one is adopted.
Resolution number two, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
I move for adoption of resolution number two.
Second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number two, there are five ayes and two absent.
Resolution number two is adopted.
Resolution number three, introduced by Councilmember Erby.
Could you read resolution number three?
Yes, ma'am. Resolution, whereas the county executive has informed the East West Gateway Council of Governments Board of Directors that St. Louis County intends to spend one million dollars to study MetroLink expansion, and whereas funding will be drawn from the eighty million dollars the county collects each year from an annual sales tax approved by voters in two thousand and ten, and whereas the referendum designated that money be set aside to analyze non-vehicular transportation alternatives, and whereas the St. Louis County Council has legislatively established goals to support diversity in contracting by encouraging minority and women-owned businesses to participate as suppliers and require county vendors to take affirmative action to ensure that they do not discriminate against persons in any protected class, and whereas legislation further provides that if county vendors do not comply with these provisions, the contract may be suspended or terminated in whole or in part, and the vendor may have, may be declared ineligible for further contracts. Now therefore be it resolved by the, by the county council of St. Louis County, Missouri as follows. Section one, the county council hereby urges the East West Gateway Council of Governments to take actions to conform to the spirit of the intent of the county's diversity goals and requirements with respect to the million dollars in county funding to study MetroLink expansion. Section two, the administrative director shall send a certified copy of this resolution to the Board of Directors of the East West Council, Gate, East West Gateway Council of Governments.
I move for adoption of resolution number three.
Second.
All, roll call, please.
Councilmember Erby?
Aye.
Councilmember Page? Councilmember Wassinger?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Meara?
Aye.
Councilmember Dolan?
Aye.
Councilmember O'Leary? Councilmember Harder?
Aye.
Mr. Chair, on resolution number three, there are five ayes and two absent.
Resolution number three is adopted.
Moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Chair. Item number one, fourth district.
Hold, please. So ordered.
And in the meeting this evening, Mr. Chair, we have four prepared orders.
Move for adoption of orders one, two, three, and four.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Orders one, two, three, and four are adopted.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes and two absents.